I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Elwood City Area State District. Today is Thursday, December 3rd. I apologize for the delay on the start of the meeting. We had an executive session, lengthy one, on personnel issues. So I thank you for your patience. We'll start off with a roll call, Mr. Zerell.
Mr. Bezeli.
Here.
Mr. Cortez.
Here.
Mr. Garda.
Here.
Mrs. Grossman. Mr. Morella.
Here.
Mr. Moonpower.
Here.
Mrs. Pansera.
Here.
Mr. Trelly.
Here.
Mr. Stevenson.
Mr. Mancini.
Here.
Mr. Carroll.
Here.
Okay, we could rise for a moment of silent meditation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this world, for liberty and justice for all.
Yeah. Okay, before we receive the minutes from our previous meetings in the packet, we need to have a motion to approve the minutes. Ms. Pansera, second. Mr. Bezeli. All in favor of approving minutes? Okay, we will go to the visitors. If you have anything that you want to bring up to the board tonight, state your name and the issue that you'd like to discuss. We'll start over here on the left. If you're just here to visit, that's fine.
Yeah, no, my name is Stephanie Cameron, and I have two kids in the district, one at Northside Elementary and one at Perry Elementary. And I'm here because I am unhappy with the amount of half-days that we've had this whole year. There's been a total of five full weeks of school from the start of the school year until Christmas. I feel it's a hardship to find somewhere for my kids to go. So many Fridays when I work, I feel like they're losing instructional time. I counted it up, there were, they lost 20 hours, and then you're losing 20 hours of instruction. Other school districts are adding days. We're taking them away. It just doesn't seem to make sense. There's little consistency to the week we're taking on, so many Fridays. But my, and then my kids come home and say things like, they had recess, they watched a movie. I feel like, why did I send my kid to school? So that's why I'm here, that's my big concern. I hope in the next calendar, next school year, that that's taken into consideration.
Well, if it makes you feel better.
Thank you.
Right before I come here, I got a road book call from Mr. Mancini, my wife, who's a teacher in another district, said exactly the same thing. Why do we have so many of these half-days? And she wanted me to voice my displeasure about the half-days as well. But so, I feel your pain and understand your frustration, but there is certainly a reason behind it.
We were hit with a lot of new things this year as far as teacher training, and that was one of the things I came to the board with last year, as far as a lot of the new items like suicide prevention training that teachers have to have, child abuse training. We're getting trained tomorrow on Educator Discipline Act that were required. So there's a lot of state mandates as far as training.
I'm a teacher as well, and those things were front-loaded at the beginning of the school year. We did them last year, so...
We're catching up. We've got hours that we have to do. So, you know, the five hours of suicide prevention training alone, we added a new, brand-new parent portal and grading system this year with Tyler.
The same thing.
So, you know...
Three hours of training.
We front-loaded a lot of that. So that's why we have them toward the beginning of the year now, and now this is the last one until, I think, May or, you know, June. So we just thought we would try to front-load as many as we could this year because of the amount of training that we had to do, adding that new, you know, system, Tyler system that teachers got hit with, adding all those items. So we're going to Google Apps for Education, which was an initiative also. So we've had outside trainers come in for that, who were taking those half-days. Teachers getting trained on Google Classroom, all the Google Apps. So I understand that, you know, where it was and, you know, and why we asked for those, and I understand being able to predict and put parents in, but again, we had to, you know, make sure we get those trains in there. So I don't think you'll see as many next year just because we're getting caught up on those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here for the same concerns, but my other concern is why is the website not up and running yet? I mean, you can't find information. I, I mean, we're living in a digital age, and I have to drive there, find out when the board meeting is, but we...
We're working on that also.
Well, I mean, it's been down for a couple months.
Right. Well, we got, you know, we, again, when we went to a new system, that was all part of it, so we go to a new website also. The company, we've been sending them, all of our pages, all of our information, what needs to go on the website, and they're, they're the ones that are in charge of uploading it. So we're at their mercy as far as getting that up and running. I, you could ask Mrs. Ruckert, I email her at least twice a week.
We're looking at, maybe looking at the, the new one on Wednesday, hopefully have it turned over by then. So it's coming. It's been a slow process, and it's coming.
I mean, why would they close the other one with not, I mean, I'm a teacher of law, and students build a website.
That was part of our old grade book system, and it was all incorporated together, so we got rid of that grade book system, that one away also.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary?
Was that? Yeah, I just, I just covered the watch. I don't have nothing to say tonight, but I will be saying things.
Craig Woodhead, just a visitor.
Sean Main, boarder visitor.
And she's all a jack visitor.
Patricia Townen, visitor.
Red, that's all a visitor.
Jim Sutkowski, visitor.
Abby Main, visitor.
Hi, Erica Gray, future board member.
That's Lyndon Vinehauer, she's a student.
Jennifer Tovin.
And then Sean Main, visitor.
That's Cindy, she's a third, a second grader.
And I'm Danielle Woodhead, waiting patiently to join you.
Lyndon Woodhead, visitor. Very good. Thank you very much. I'll go to Mr. Mancini, the superintendent's report.
Okay, we have our Christmas break coming up, December 23rd, January 3rd. Again, we have a half-day tomorrow for Educator Discipline Act training. I also like to recognize one of the board members here that will be down and leaving us, Mr. Garda. I have had the pleasure of working with Mr. Garda as an administrator through all his times, as a principal, and, you know, the last four years as a board member, and I want to congratulate him and wish him best of luck in his endeavors. I know you tried to give this back when you retired, but you're not able to.
No, Jen and Bob are not here, but their eight years of service also on the board are greatly
appreciated, and looking forward to working with new board members, so. And one more item for this part. I know that Mr. Lake presented a technology proposal to you in the last board meeting on an idea that would come forth. He did send us the actual financial proposal, which was in your communicator. It's not on as a motion right now, just because, you know, there's a hefty expense with that, and if this board would like to make that decision as far as, you know, going forward with that, that's, we could write a new motion for that, or if they would like to wait and postpone it until the new board sets in to discuss the financial, you know, ramifications of that and the future budget. Mr. Lake has kind of given the okay that the January board meeting would be the deadline for it to possibly happen for the 16th, 17th school year, just because of scheduling. And if it doesn't happen, then that January board meeting would have to be further discussed. If it, you know, happens during the budget process in April, then it would have to be for the 17th, 18th school year, just because he's in January getting the schedule going, the class schedule and so on. So that's why you didn't see it as a motion on this item, but, I mean, on this agenda. But if you would like to make that decision, you know, I'll leave that up to you as far as, but there is a January possibility for him, in time, to make those changes to the schedule for the following year. So it could be a new business item, or table it till the future. And I have copies from the...
How's the board feel about that?
My personally, I think we should wait until January.
I think we could discuss it when the boys meet tonight, and get some of the conversations started, let them look at it.
I have copies from the...
Is everybody okay with that?
That's all I have, Mr. Ruckert.
Thank you. Mr. Mancini. That will bring us to Revenue and Finance, Mr. Morella.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under Revenue Finance Number 7, General Fund Treasurer's Report. In your folder is General Fund Treasurer's Report as of October 31st, 2015. The summary of accounts as follows. West Banko Bank Checking Account, $374,640.30. PLGIT, $10,326.28. PSDLF, $1,385.21. PA Invest, $378.87. West Banko Public Investment Account, $2,761,387.72. West Banko Certificates of Deposit, $3,523,798.70. For a total cash investments on October 31st, 2015, that's $6,671,916.45. I move this, these reports to be prepared.
And second, Mr. Bezeli, and then Mr. Morella. Any questions about the motion? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number 8, General Fund Accounts Payable. In your folder are the General Fund Accounts Payable checks, including our checks 110-985 through 111153. 169 checks and 12 wire transfers amounting to $1,612,164.84. I move the General Fund Accounts Payable checks to be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Trelly. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number 9, Capital Reserve Fund Treasurer's Report. In your folder is the Capital Reserve Fund Treasurer's Report as of November 30th, 2015. Total investments at November 30th were $2,194.12, with $6,605.20 in the checking account, for a total available balance of $8,799.32. I move that the Capital Reserve Fund Treasurer's Report be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Trelly. Any questions? Any objections to the motion? Motion passes.
Number 10, Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note. In your folder is a summary of the bid results for the 2015-16 Tax and Revenue Anticipation Note. I move that this proposal submitted by First National Bank of Newcastle, PA, at a negative bank qualified tax exempt rate interest rate, I swear I can't remember very well. I move that the proposal submitted by First National Bank of Newcastle, Pennsylvania, at a bank qualified tax exempt rate interest of 1.12% be accepted, and that the note resolution be approved as presented. I further move that the business manager be authorized to finalize the note in cooperation with the solicitor and district's financial advisor.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections?
I think I have a question. When, when are we going to need to move forward?
Cash flow projections at this point indicate we should make it through January before we'll actually have to draw on that. We're not going to be settling this until January 11th, so I'm real hopeful that the state budget passes and we get our state revenues before we actually have to draw on that. If we don't have to settle this, this loan, then there's really not going to be any costs to the district, other than some of the solicitor's costs, because he'll have to start fairly soon putting his documents together. So again, we won't be drawing on that. We should make it through the end of January, the reserves that we have. We thought about putting it off another month, but as we looked at cash flow, we would have been pushing a little bit too close not to do the loan.
Send the solicitors to go to Harrisburg. That's what they said. All right, any other questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number 11, Tax Refund Request. In your folder are property tax refund calculations for, 1, Julie Howe, 5214, Kissel Avenue, Altoona, PA. Number 2, Mark Keizer, 296, Hanson Avenue, Ellis City, PA. And number 3, David Lyons, 1018 Hickernell Road, Ellis City, PA. All for properties located in Perry Township. The amounts due have been confirmed by the Perry Township Tax Collector, and I move that these, that the refunds be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Trelly. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number 12, Repository Tax Sales. A, in your folder are bid acceptance forms for repository property for a $551 bid submitted by Shay Kosha on a property located at 705 Wayne Avenue, tax ID 11-020200. A $500 bid submitted by Jasmine Jones on a property located at 818 Prince Street, tax ID 14-020300. A $1,000 bid submitted by Urban Strohacker for each of the two properties located on Church Street, tax IDs 36-102200 and 361-102300. I move the bids be accepted, and the business manager be authorized to execute and submit the forms to the Lawrence County Tax Plan Bureau.
Second, Mr. Garda. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
And B, in your folder are two $500 bids submitted by Beth Boyd for two properties located on Church Street, tax IDs 36-102200 and 36-102300. I move the bids be rejected, and that the business manager be authorized to execute and submit the forms to the Lawrence County Tax Plan Bureau.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Questions? Mr. Trelly.
Why are we rejecting them?
Because there, the, in the first motion, there were $1,000 bids on the two properties, and in the second motion, there were $500 bids, so we rejected the other bid.
Same property, sorry.
Yes. Any other questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
And that is all I have for the Revenue and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Morella. Next, we'll move to Personnel Education, Mr. Garda.
Thank you, Mr. President. New teacher mentor, I move the recognition wish be approved as mentor for the new, new youth guidance counselor committee liaison, and be paid according to the terms of collective bargaining agreement.
Second, Mr. Trelly. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number 14, Basketball Coaching Positions. I move that Nick DeEterbe approved as volunteer basketball coach for the seventh grade basketball teams.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Number 15, Midwestern Intermediate Unit Board Nomination. I move that Renee Petrelli be nominated to fill one of the seats on the MIU Board Core left making, with the resignation of Deborah Alabac from Union Area Schools. Returned to run through June 30th, 2016. Or Richard Roberts from South Butler County School District, return, run through June 30th, 2017.
Second, Mr. Cortez. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes. Mr. Trelly.
Number 16, FMLA Leaves. I move that Dean Ruckert, elementary arts teacher, be granted a family medical leave for a 12-week period effective January 4, 2016.
Second, Mr. Morella. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Short and sweet in your last presentation. Thank you, Mr. Garda. Next, we'll move to Properties and Transportation, Ms. Pansera.
Thank you, Mr. President. Seventeen Facility Requests. A, the Elwood City Area Basketball Boosters and the Boys Basketball Team have submitted the following facility requests. 1, Hartman, Lincoln and Northside Gymnasiums for elementary basketball, intermediate basketball program, at the discretion of the Principal Athletic Director throughout December and January. 2, Lincoln High School Gym on Saturday, December 12th, 2015, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. for youth clinic and showcase. B, Jolene Kupa, Elwood City Girls Basketball Coach, request permission to use the Hartman Gymnasium for fifth, sixth grade girls' basketball team practice during December, January, and February, at the discretion of the Principal. C, Lincoln High School Cheerleading Booster, request permission to operate the concession stand during the seventh and eighth grade boys' basketball games and the three home wrestling matches for 2015 and 16 school year. I move that the request be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Bezeli. Any questions? Mr. Morella.
Does the wrestling team have a boosters organization?
I believe that they do. Yeah.
Shouldn't we offer them the concession stand?
They didn't, they didn't request them.
They never did, so.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about that in the past, that the host sport should have first dibs, but if they don't have the organization to request it and run it, then...
A lot of times, it's like the washer can't, it's like the sports, it's hard.
That's true.
I just want to make sure that they have had the opportunity.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
18, Removal of Old Obsolete Equipment. I move the administration be authorized to dispose of two old portable basketball hoops under the parameters of the Board Policy 706.1.
Second, Mr. Garda. Questions?
Where are they going? Follow the policy, we'll put them after bid, I believe, first, and then follow that, you know, chain right down to...
Are they usable? Are they old, or...
I think they're usable, but, I mean, that could be...
Like any of the elementary?
That's where they're at.
That's where they're at, and they don't use them.
They feel they're unsafe, because all the gym classes and the food that's going in there and stuff, there's nowhere to keep them, and so you keep them in the gym. There's a lot of activities in the gym with, all these kids are young, you know, and they're afraid that they might fall on them.
So they don't use them for, like, outside?
They don't ever use them, they're sitting there in cases, no, they're indoor.
Oh, okay.
And, and where, where they're at, we have outdoor hoops, so. They really feel they're unsafe, so.
Any other questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
Western, number 19, Western Pennsylvania Gasoline Diesel Fuel Consortium. In your folder is an authorization form indicating the district's agreement to participate in the Western Pennsylvania Gasoline Diesel Fuel Consortium for the 2016-2017 school year. In addition to authorizing participation, the form authorizes the gasoline diesel consortium committee to act as the district's authorized agent. I move that the authorization form be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Bezeli. Any questions? Any objections?
I have the question, is it insane, or has it already gone up on the...
The queue actually, the rates went down last year. What happens is they lock in a certain price, and once we lock in, prices go up, it works to our advantage, but prices go down, then obviously the rates start disappearing, but I think we're doing pretty well off this end.
Any other questions? Any objections? Motion approved.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pansera. Next, we'll move to Student Affairs and Athletics, Mr. Cortez.
Thank you, Mr. President. 20, Social Event. Mr. Lee Caldwell, Lincoln High School March Campaign Director, request permission to take Lincoln Blue Band to New York City to perform in the USSS Intrepid Air and Space Museum from Thursday, March 3rd, 2016, 11:30 p.m., until Saturday, March 5th, 2016. Lady, I move the social event be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Trelly. Any questions?
Question, how's it being paid for?
Any other questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
21, School Physicians Agreement. In your folder is a physicians agreement between Dr. Lawrence Rayhoff and the district from period January 1st, 2016 through January 1st, 2017. I move the agreement be approved as presented.
Second, Ms. Pansera. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes.
22, Athletic Treasurer's Report. In your folder is the Athletic Treasurer's Report as of November 30th, 2015, reflecting total expenditures of $50,377.64. I move the report be approved as presented.
Second, Mr. Bezeli. Any questions? Any objections? Motion passes. That's all I have tonight, Mr. President, or the Student Affairs Department. Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Recognition Communication, Ms. Petrelli.
This is the breadbasket one? Wasn't this old?
It's now, it's more, it's actually, PTO's on there, I think, on that one.
This is just...
That's just a letter they send to the, those groups that send money in.
I do, okay, that's interesting. This is basically just a statement of fund activity of our breadbasket program, stating that the contributions that we had received, one from Calvin Presbyterian Church, one from the Elwood City School District, one from the Elwood City PTO, and one from John and Marcia Cater. They totaled up to $383.28, and we just want to thank them for, for support. That's all we have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trelly. We will move to New Business. Anybody have anything for New Business? All right, well, I have something. I talked to a member of the HOI Foundation Board this week, and she wanted me to pass on to the powers that be, or into the right hands, the fact that they have $200,000 in scholarship money, and she's amazed that they're having a hard time giving it away. And wanted to make sure that Lincoln was aware that it's for all Lawrence County high schoolers, and that, wanted to make sure that our guidance counselors were getting that out there. There's a website where the, the form, the application is on the website, and, you know, it's also a good opportunity for our students. In the course of that conversation, she also had mentioned that the HOI gives grant money out to nonprofits, including school districts, and thinking about what we're going to talk about either later tonight or in January with the Makerspace Labs, you know, we can talk to them.
So they're supposed to, we were supposed to get, do a presentation, Mr. Solich and I were, we actually even met with Mr. McIlwain, talked to him, and we were waiting for confirmation for us to actually present to the HOI our proposal, and waiting for that, so.
It sounds like he's got a lot of clout there, so he can be a fellow, and he's a good asset, you know, if you look at. And I guess, just before we adjourn, echo what Mr. Mancini said about Mr. Garda. You have been an extremely valuable member of this board for the last four years. Your wisdom and experience as a, as an administrator has been very, very helpful to all of us. Well, I'll speak for myself, but I think I'm speaking for everybody around this table. It was always very much appreciated and great insight, so thank you for your years of service. You will definitely be missed. And to our two colleagues that aren't here, you know, they've been on this board for eight years and have dedicated a lot of time, a lot of hours. They've had some situations that have made their attendance somewhat difficult over the last several months with maybe some personal employment issues. months with maybe some, uh, personal employment issues, whatever, uh, the case might be, but wanted to also go on record to, uh, to thank Bob Stevenson and Jennifer Grossman for their eight years of service to this board. So, if there's no, uh, nothing else under new business, we will, uh, is it a motion? A motion to, I've been around eight years myself. Uh, so we need a motion to adjourn, sign, die.
Shall we?
Mr. Cortez, second.
Second.
Mr. Brazelli. Oh, thanks. One, one, uh, mispronunciation of a word, and, uh, no one ever lets you live it down around here. Um, all right, so we need to, uh, move to reorganization, so we need to elect a temporary chair. Do we accept the motion for a temporary chair?
It cannot be a newly elected or reelected member that has been holdover members, which would be Ms. Pansera, Mr. Brazelli, or Ms. Trell. And Mr. Morella, sorry, looking around, please. It would be the temporary, there's a four.
I'll move to have a, a temporary chair.
Okay, second, Mr. Gard. Oh. He kicked you to the curb already. Second, to Ms. Trell. Oh, sorry, to Mr. Cortez. Okay.
Wait, you're, you just reelected?
He can't be the temporary chair, he gets second.
Oh, okay, sorry, misunderstood.
It's a, Ms. Trell.
Trell, come on up.
Sir, more called up, Mr. Care.
I see you have a, a board that you have to talk to. Yes.
Mr. Serrano, would you please read that?
Yes, I will. We have certificates of election. Read as follows. Certificate of election, November 18, 2015. Reading undersigned members of the County Board of Elections of said county hereby certified that after tallying the votes cast at the general election held on the third day of November 2015 in said county, it appears that Vero Cortez, Erica Gray, Mike Newpower, Jennifer Tomlin, Danielle Woodhead, were duly elected in the office of school director for the city borough township district of Elwood City area and county for said. And this is signed by three representatives of the county board of elections, and we have certificate of elections for each individual, which will be incorporated into the minutes.
Can I have the new board members please come forward? And our two main board members stand.
Hey, we're here to come for you. Stay on. You're on, it's all good. We're reorganizing.
You can stay standing.
Stand, please. All right. Raise your right hand. Be off for me. I do solemnly swear, I do solemnly swear or affirm, or affirm, that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations, you are the official. Okay, now we're going to open the floor for nominations for president.
I'm sorry, I wasn't meaning, Matt, yeah, excuse me, Ms. Morella.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Brazelli for, for president.
Thank you. Will anybody second the nomination? Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mike Newpower.
And is there a second for the nomination? Second invited, Mrs. Pansera. Are there any other nominations for president? If not, I'd like a motion to close the nominations. Seconded, seconded by Mrs. Stone.
Motion is favored, Mr. Cortez.
To, uh, close the nomination.
And we're going to now vote on the two candidates, Mr. Brazelli. We have a roll call.
So you respond with the candidate of choice, is that correct, Mr. Brazelli? Mr. Brazelli.
Mr. Morella.
Mr. Cortez. Mrs. Gray. Mr. Morella.
Ms. Trell.
Mr. Newpower.
Mr. Newpower.
Mrs. Pansera.
Yeah.
Mrs. Trell.
Just a draw.
Mrs. Tomlin.
Ms. Trell.
Mrs. Woodhead.
Mr. Phil. And now I'd like to open up, uh, the floor for nominations for vice president. Miss, I'm sorry, Mrs. Gray, Mrs. Gray, I'm sorry. Mrs. Stone, I'm looking, what? I'd like to nominate Mr. Morella. Can I draw the second for nominations for vice president? Second invited, Mrs. Gray. Any other nominations for vice president?
No, Mr. Cortez.
Do I have a second for, for Mr. Cortez? Two seconds. Do I have a motion to close the nominations for vice president?
Shall we?
Second.
Mrs. Gray. Mr. Morella.
Mr. Morella.
Mr. Newpower. Mr. Cortez. Mrs. Pansera.
Mr. Morella. Do they, so I don't think, uh, does somebody like to read, um, the motions, please? The numbers don't count.
Number twenty-six, board meeting dates. In your folder is a list of the 2016 board meeting dates. I move that this list be approved as presented.
Correct.
At least they don't even have a list. We had a question. Did they have a list? Um, well, I'm kind of looking at mine right now. Because, no, but I don't know how many, how many you have, but. So I had already seen them. Excuse my stuff, I was ready to go to the conference. We have all the votes separated. Do we have a second on the motion then for the dates? Are there any questions about the motion? Any objections? The motion passed.
Number twenty-seven, approved signature. I move that Renee Patrilli, as president, be authorized as an approved signatory on general payroll athletic facility cap or reserve.
Second.
Any questions about the motion? Any objections? The motion passed.
Number twenty-seven, approved signature. I move that Renee Patrilli, as president, be authorized as an approved signatory on general payroll athletic facility cap or reserve.
Second.
Any questions about the motion? Any objections? Motion passes.
That's all I have, kind of, here.
Is there any new business that anybody would like to discuss?
Position, I need to check. Like, we're at, uh, uh, we do, but they were waiting till January, yeah, because they were actually, we had before, they were like, January, we're not waiting for a vote taken.
Is it her mom?
Well, that's, that's on.
Okay, she is.
But then we would wait till January, because vote taken, it was a call.
Yeah, we would need someone to replace them in the next session.
She's still here. Did I miss something? So that's something that new board members can consider, um, vote texts. We have two representatives from our board that sits on the vote tech board, Mr. Cortez can fill. If you have any questions or interest in it, I think we're going to discuss that, I guess, with the January meeting. Other new business questions?
I would like to bring up, um, under new business, um, we have talked in the past about committees, and now that we're in board setting, um, I'd like to get the, um, the new boards and the old boards, um, views on committees and maybe, um, get one started. If the board sees fit, um, started now, with budget coming up and, um, all this new technology changes, I'd like to see us try to get started on a committee, and I'm not sure exactly how everybody feels about that, so I'd like to bring that to the table. Anybody have any comments or, or concerns about, um, starting a committee? So, um, at this point, I think we need to, to organize just how committees, so I'd like to see what people feel about, um, how we want to rule that, um, but I'd like to see at this point, right now, specifically stating the budget, that, that's what we're, that's what we're going into, so. Comments?
I think it's a good idea to set us up, see what the budget looks like and ask for guidance from the board's perspective as to what we see as fit for a budget, what we see good to cut and keep in light of state budget bypassing and what we have available, so I think it's a good idea.
When do you, Joe, when do you, uh, when do you guys start?
Just to get something out pretty soon in January to, I'll get a note out to the administrators asking them to go to the department heads and the elementary, all the other librarians, Mr. Drucker, Mr. Schuster, and then, um, I'll start working on salaries and stuff that I can work on, and then traditionally, we use a meeting in March, administrative group, uh, kind of figure out what is going to go in, and then we start having public board sessions in April, meeting for a preliminary budget.
So you, you basically are starting now together?
Well, not really.
What kind of a concept?
There's so much going on at this point, and I really don't have time to start early with any of the January stuff, and that's what I'm trying to project out, where this current year is going to be, and I start working on salaries for the most part.
From administrative standpoint?
The, what will happen is these guys will get notification, they'll start being with department chairs, get, and the department chairs will go out to their, um, staff, they'll report their acquisitions back, needs, things that they would like, wish list, um, basic stuff that they've always gotten in the past, we'll gather all those, give to Mr. Jerome, tally them, and we'll sit down as administration, cut, keep, need, you know, and then that's going to present to the, uh, board, or how do you need them, so, um, that's been the process in the past, so.
We just want to, I, I would like to see a group of the board, a, a committee, meet along with you guys, so that, like we've talked about in the past, that we are, are stepping through it with you, so that you don't have that blank stare at the end of the, at the end of the budget, like, okay, this is it?
Right.
So that we've gone along the process with you, so when do we need to establish that committee to, to be a part of that process?
Probably get established in January to start that process. I know I'm planning on having a, uh, board retreat again, but one of the things we were going to talk about was budget, and, uh, process, what kind of budget does the board want? Um, so, um, you know, I think in January, if we get a committee together, we can start setting up meetings as we go through February, March, April, May, and that committee is filled in on what's been asked, what, um, you know, what the wishes of the administration is as far as, as budgetary items, we sit down with that committee and the board, um, and that then is presented back to the whole board through that committee. Um, you know, I can see that as a possibility of starting, you know, we're not ready right now as far as, as a committee, or, you know, as a, as an administration to talk budget, because in January, when you start getting schedule together, starts getting, you know, things together, then that's a process that we need to deal with.
Everybody in favor of committees and waiting till January?
I think in January, if we come up with a plan as to what committees we want to see and work with the administration on what they see, committees will have some kind of open-minded communication, make this all work out in a way that we want it all to, I think, January is what comes to plan, present.
Anything else under new business, anybody wants to discuss? If not, then I need a motion to adjourn. Second. Adjourn. I'll put the bank down. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations again, congratulations.
Hey, who knows? How are ya? Let's see. I know, I know, I know, I know, I know, I know. He used to work, right, in the room, you know? This was it, this was it, this was it. Remember, Darke wasn't here, and, and Marion Panik, he used to make fun of everybody all the time.
Good night.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I'll see you tomorrow.
Congratulations. P P D. It's a good deal. Well, he's bored without football, I figured, but I hope he left in face.
I just, I'm, I'm a barrier, I'm sorry.
On the agenda, I heard, oh. This is pretty much, and how late back to the game, huh?